Well, guys, if everyone's ready, we'll get started. Start off the meeting by opening with Pledge of Allegiance, if you guys join.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under bound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Cody, your public hearing is first.
Okay. So we'll start off with Chrissy Gerald hosting the public meeting for the Stormwater Improvement Construction Project. Chrissy, take it away.
Thank you so much. My name's Chrissy Gerald, grant administrator on the project. The town of Roseville is going to be applying for a stormwater improvements construction project. And we are required to do two public hearings, one before proposal and one before final application. Our proposal is due on or before April the 29th, which I've already started on the online system. And so we're doing the first public hearing tonight. Cost will change up a little bit, but what we have going in for the proposal is total project cost of $850,000. We're going to be requesting a grant in the amount of $600,000, which is the maximum amount we can go for. And $250,000 in local match. That is derived from $5,000 from previously paid environmental review, which will be paid before final application. And right now we have it at $245,000 with an SRF flood control loan. But for the final application, that local match will be split up. $5,000 for previously paid preliminary engineering. Around $96,000 is what we're thinking from your American Rescue Plan dollars. And then about $149,000 SRF flood control loan. That will help to buy down your rates, so we're looking about probably about $7.50 is what we're kind of looking at. To be able to buy down that rate with that loan. If you turn on the back of the page, I want to go over the scoring with you guys. So the grant is a very competitive grant. It is a federal grant, comes from Housing and Urban Development, trickles down to the state, to the Lieutenant Governor's office. She awards, manages, and sponsors those funds. So we're either going to get the grant or we don't. So we will, we will see how many they'll fund this round. I'm thinking anywhere from about five to six in the whole state in the stormwater category alone. So you have, there's a total of 700 points and in order to get funded, you have to have a minimum score of 450. We're well going to exceed that. I mean, this project, there's no reason it shouldn't be funded. You didn't have to do an income survey because your town meets by census data at 59.54. So OCR approved us using the census data on March the 23rd, so we're good to go there. So we're getting 59.54 out of 100 points there. Community stress factors, those are out of your control. They're set by the IU school business and other entities like Purdue. It's mainly medium household income, all kinds of other factors they look at. And we're at a 95.30 out of 175, which is a really high score. So typically, you don't ever see anybody in the hundreds. So to be at a 95 is amazing. Local match, we are going to be almost at 30%, which is stormwater program. You are required to do at least a 10% match, so we are 20 points over that, which is great. We're at a 29.41. Project design factors, this is the narratives that I'll be working on. Project description, we just explain in layman's terms what we're doing with the project. Project need, we explain why, you know, we need this project, what's going on with the residents' yards and driveways and basements flooding or whatever the issues are. I'll be speaking with residents, getting letters to support. And financial impact, we explain why the community can't do this project on their own. So I actually submitted last round, round one of 2021 Clinton Stormwater Project. They were funded on the first time. I scored a 293 out of 300. And then this last round, round two of 2021, I put in Seated the Water and I scored a 296 out of 300. So I wouldn't see us scoring anything. We're going to be at least in the 290s, I would think, out of 300 on the narratives. Project sustainability, financial gap, that's what they look at as we, it's a little calculation that OCR does. We put in the amount of grant, how many users are on the system. You know, this is a small community, so you know, it'd be different in the city of Clinton that has about 2,000, 3,000 users on their system, which their amount would go down. But there, OCR is saying that you have to charge a $16.62 stormwater rate to do this project on your own. That is, that's great points. So that's out of 25 on the financial gap. Project sustainability, because we're going to be establishing the utility, the stormwater utility, and then also setting a rate, which you can actually set your start date of collecting rates past the grant award date in August. So that way, if we, for some reason, we don't get the grant, we don't, you know, we can back out of that ordinance and then we can go back in for the grant and so forth. So we're going to be getting 25 points there. So we're at 41.62 out of 50 there. And I've already applied for your bonus points, which you received on March the 23rd. So technically, we, in order to have the minimum score to be awarded at 450, we only have to score 199 out of 13, which tells me we're going to probably get funded on this project. The only hiccup that we have right now is Scott Craig, your attorney, has reached out to the railroad and the railroad has denied us. But it's a portal, which he can't really talk to anybody in person. And we cannot apply for the project unless we have site control, which is that property easement or something. So Scott is going to continue working on that. He's going to keep digging and see what, what we can do on that.
I've found out today.
Yeah.
I just talked to Scott a couple hours ago, so.
Yeah, so this is normal in stormwater projects. We always usually obtain it right at the end. So don't be too concerned. We'll keep working on that for you. So the engineer wasn't able to be here tonight, but the project area starts a little bit, a little bit above Miller and travels down onto the railroad property that's owned, hits Middle Street, kind of curves to the right, goes past Middle Street, down into some property, and then on Central Street takes left and then goes down a little bit on Maple. So it's really, they're going to be putting in anywhere from 12, let's see, 12 to 36 inch reinforced concrete pipe. And they're going to have some manholes and inlets there as well. And it's supposed to really just get all that water away from that area, so. If we do, we will find out on August the 25th if we're awarded and OCR will give us a call the day before. So right now, we're kind of just waiting on Scott to get that easement. And then in the meantime, I'll keep working on the application. I've been working with Natalie on a lot of the items, the financial and things like that, so. But we will get your proposal turned in before April 29th. That's a lot of information. Is there, is there a utility guy here over the stormwater?
No, I'm not over it.
So, and what is your name, sir?
I'm not over it. I'm just the utility guy.
Are you the, are you the expert of stormwater in the town? Is there an expert stormwater person in town that can be my best friend for the next couple of weeks?
He raised his hand.
Jase?
Jase, it sounds like you're being volatile.
Jase, is your cell phone number on this? May I have it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is not. Oh, okay.
Okay, Jase. Don't be screening your calls for me now. Okay, I'll reach out to you and I'll, I'll let, we'll get some information for the application, so. Do you guys have any questions on the grant or? If we are to get funded on August 25th, what will happen then is I start to get, get together what's called FEEPs. It's all the documentation that OCR will want to see. They'll start getting together a grant application. They'll get that over electronically for signature. Your engineers will then go into final design on the project. And I would say, and it's going to be depending on weather, if we have a really, really mild winter, we'd probably be able to start, you know, early, late November, early December. If not, we'll have to wait until the spring, but we'll just have to see.
Now, that affect our new roads that we've got foot in?
Well.
Will it go under them or will it go through them?
Well, I can let you know that. I will look at the, I don't think there was any directional drillings underneath the road. And I'm not sure if it was directional drilled or not, but I can let you know that. And what was your name, sir?
Cliff Amber.
Cliff. And your number's on the sheet, right? I do know with this project, anything that we, anything that's disturbed has to go back to the way it was, if not better. I do know there was some HMA, in-course aggregate base and things like that, so I'm assuming there's some pavement restoration on there.
I was going to say, we got enough pot holes and down where you can dig.
Yeah, we, we're not allowed to leave it in potholes, I promise. Yeah. Are there any residents here tonight that would like to say something positive that I could fit in the minutes about the project?
Jerry, do you have anything positive to say?
I just come in here, he knows he is.
Jerry, are you in support of this project, Jerry?
I'm sorry?
Would you be in support of this project as a resident?
I ain't in support of nothing going higher, but you know.
You're in support of the project, but you're concerned about the rain?
Well, you know.
Okay.
I mean, the rain goes off, God puts it there, and then we got to pay for it to get it away. It's kind of silly, but it's my thoughts, but. I mean, if it keeps it out of somebody's basement or crawl space and, you know, well, yeah. I mean, initially, that's what it's for, right?
Correct, yes. It's to draw in that whole area, and it's a big portion of the town, to draw all that out. And I do know that's your future site for your, do you leave a slash pad? Is that correct?
It's our hopes, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Is there going to be a future construction that's on either side of the main street or, whatever this is out here? What is this, Main Street?
Yeah, we.
Other side to tie into if it continued, you know, might have a problem on the other side of the road?
Jerry, we're going to address each section as we can.
Oh.
So this is just the start. We had to start somewhere.
I got you.
So this is the start of the project and our hope is to fix Main Street, obviously, because it floods like 10 people. Down in Becky's area floods still. There's a lot of areas we're going to have to address later.
Okay. Do you have flooding in your context? Okay. Driveway, yard? Oh, my gosh.
That house I got on cemetery, it soaks it up pretty good.
So the main items we have to.
Water wise, so that's why I sit down in there, because I got that house down there and it gets a lot of water down there and floods.
Obtaining that site control and then also create your utility.
Well, that part was the problem, yes, before I got it.
That rate out, you know. Keep it in effect for the next month, put it out until that maybe January or something.
It's a good project. It's a needed project.
It's a good project. It's needed, but I'm like Jerry, I'm concerned about rates.
Town council, it's really important for the minutes. Would you consider this stormwater project the start of this, one of your top priorities?
Definitely.
At least you know what they want in the minute, so.
I live on Maple, so I, I get calls about that down there.
How many, about how many calls do you get in that, would you say?
Three or four this last month.
Did you hear the break?
Three, two, four, three to four just in March.
Might be the same person, but.
And is it, you may call, is it their, their crawl space flooding or basement or?
Oh, and into the house, in like the garage. That's what I've been over there with. Slowest.
You're all in one, you know.
And this person, would you be able to call and see if they have pictures of that?
I could, yeah.
That would be great if we could get some pictures of that.
I think Natalie probably has a picture of her front yard.
I have a yard picture for sure.
Now, whether she took pictures in the house or not.
Which we're coming up on this rainy season, so if we get a really.
After tomorrow, I might have some pictures.
Yeah, we have a real bad rain. Maybe call her and say, take a picture of your garage or your crawl space, whatever. Anything with, does she have a sump pump in her basement?
There's no basement.
Just a crawl?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, Jase, you have some stormwater pictures too.
Of Main Street.
Okay.
As I say, are they considering the entire town for those pictures or you want just the area we're working on?
It was sectioned off by houses with benefit.
Yeah, probably in that area of benefit, which I'll give you a call tomorrow and we'll talk about things.
I think they're going to take a big old picture of the water.
Is there a better time to call you tomorrow or? Anytime, okay.
I mean, I'm just going to just text some to you really quick, Christine.
Okay.
I may have already, I may have already sent these to you. I don't know, but.
Okay.
Hey Natalie, one, I know you might talk to her, is Lisa Yates, is that her name? This is south of Ben, Top Alert.
Let's Linda Yates.
Linda. I know her basement has been polluted for a long time. And she lives right there off East Street.
I'll have Jase go talk to her.
What is your name, sir?
Taylor Thatcher.
Okay, just kidding. Do you guys have any questions? After the proposal goes in, I'll know, I have a mall up there at the state, so he will tell me how many applications the win in for stormwater. And so then we'll know kind of what we're up against and who we're up against. And then OCR, the state agency, will set a site visit, which is site visit, they don't want to look at the site. They just come and read off a piece of paper to us and they're supposed to tell us how to make the application better, but they'll just read off. So. And then after that, we'll turn in the final application on July, on or before July 1st. And then we will, we've got our second public hearing already scheduled for your June meeting.
Okay.
And so we're halfway there. So I'll go ahead and adjourn the public hearing if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And then if everybody has time to look over the last few minutes, we can prove those, started the actual meeting now.
Thanks, Christie.
Hey, let me know if you talk to Eric. Okay, I'll talk to him more. All right.
Everybody had time to look over the minutes? Motion to?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March meeting, March 8th, 2022.
One second.
One second.
I don't have a signature line on these minutes. I had to move them into Google Chrome. I must have lost my signature line. So we're just going to sign the bottom of the code.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Start off with old business from last meeting. Anyone have any impertinent that they want to bring up?
Um, Cody, you want to go to Mark, since he's here, Mark Davis? Do you want to do that, since that's kind of old, new, current?
Mark, we will start off with you then.
All right, great. I forwarded to Cody and he said he would forward to you guys electronically.
Yep.
But I brought some printed copies tonight. So, and I hope they're large enough for you to be able to read. These are, the, the front page is not, but that's kind of an overview. Did you get two copies? That felt kind of thick.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
So this is a preliminary design, basically, of what we're proposing, or options, okay, available for getting through town for the, for the trail project. Front page is just an overview of our overall project. If you go to the second page, it as well shows basically a overall picture coming from the county line and then going up to the, to Big Raccoon Creek. If you look at the third sheet, this is starting to show where, actually, second sheet, when we look at the numbers, because I, I pulled different ones. We need to go to, yeah, 3.3. Yep, that's, yeah, 3.3. And you see the existing trail in the upper part of that. And it has been discussed as there's a right of way, the, like an alleyway through there, where we could come over and connect to the town park, okay? Another option is going on up to Central Street, or, yeah, Central Street and coming down and then getting over to Main Street. And I think there's a third one as well, which is coming all the way up to Middle Street.
Yeah.
And then cutting that. So, and basically, what I'm looking for is to understand the preference of the town, okay, on how to do this, because these are preliminary, just showing how it is. And we still have design work to do in order how it's actually going to look or what we're going to do. But I need your input. One is the route, two is how we want to handle it. I mean, if we are going to utilize sidewalks as they exist, if they, if we need to redo them, widen them or change something potentially, which side of the street, if we want to have it on the side of the street and going up. So as a preference on getting over to Main Street, what, what would that be? Would it be going by and connecting to Park?
I, I kinda, and I'll show you here. I talked to these guys a little bit about it as we were starting here. In my opinion, I think our best bet is cutting straight across and then straight up one side, no shooting back and across or forth. I think it just makes the most sense for no.
I agree.
Okay, perfect, awesome.
And so that is basically the option one in this, if you look at it, I believe.
Okay, when you were talking about not shooting back and forth across, which side of Main Street were you thinking that they need to go up?
Well, they're coming across.
The west side.
On the west side. West side, because that's where.
But what about the cafe? Is that going to make, because you can't ride out in the street there.
Well.
I mean, you would be out.
The sidewalk is.
Well, if they're on bikes, they're going to have to go out on the street.
They're going to do.
They can. I mean, it, it's, you know, on, on.
But they're going to do an outdoor seating.
Correct, but they still have to leave right away for pedestrian traffic. I mean, they can't take the entire side.
Right, and I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Scott about that, but I was going to, going to, because, and it doesn't have to be a, you know, 10 foot width. I mean, it's, it's a pedestrian width and, I mean, and I'm basing that on similar trails, like up in Indianapolis. There's a lot of restaurants that have outdoor seating just like that, and then they've got a four foot wide. And most people walk their bikes if they're, if they happen to be riding and there's people out there, they're going to probably walk their bikes by, you know, if it is. But it's, I'd say the majority of the traffic is going to be for traffic anyways, you know, people walking.
I would think it'd be good for them anyway.
You would replace the sidewalk?
Yeah, exactly.
You would replace them to what's standard now, right? And, I mean, they wouldn't be wider, I mean, I don't.
Well, it would, we, we would prefer it to be wider, yes, yes.
Just, you know, exactly how much?
Looking to have it eight foot wide.
Eight foot?
Yeah.
What are they now?
Six to, six to eight. They're, they're probably three, two, three, maybe four in some.
They're probably little, they're four in some places, I'd say. Jase, how are, how about, how wide are they down at your house?
Thirty-six inches.
You think three?
Forty-two.
Somewhere in between there. I know that when Brian Fleck was here from HWC, he and I measured some on the other side of Main Street and they were at four feet.
Okay.
On that end, so.
And, and that's sufficient if we want to leave them there, like that, if you want to leave, leave it, or if we.
It'd be nice to have them all cohesive down through there.
Most of your sidewalk, you're going to go three square to busted square. So unless you want to replace every two, three square, it'd be best bet to redo the whole side.
Are you talking up here with the curbing and everything or?
No, when you start getting past the gas station, it, it goes up and down and some, some of the sidewalks are busted up from the trees and other things, so you might be missing one or two here. And then there's a, there's a slide. Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Right, just as an example, what we, what I would suggest or offer up is, like, say, once you get north of the restaurant here and go, we can, rather than correct where the sidewalk is, potentially look at taking that out and restoring that to the yard and then moving the trail out on the other side of the road, between the utility poles and the road. And, and just building a new, just building a new one through there. And then each driveway would have its own, I mean, it would be, you know, accommodated as far as any drives going up through there as well.
So there wouldn't be any off-road parking there, I thought.
I see what you're saying. You just, I don't know, I don't know how much, how much street parking goes on on that in the main street.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Mostly down with the.
With the depot?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they have some space, I would say.
Yeah, they're going to need more space because they've got a lot of things on our property that's going to be getting moved. Potentially, but I mean, that's the kind of questions I have and, and we can, and now's the time to determine that. Do we want to just keep it where it's at, which is a lot closer to the homes? Or potentially do away with that and restore those yards, which would be part of the project as well, that we would cover and then, and move it out on the other side of the utility pole.
That's an interesting option, Mark. I don't think I'd ever thought about that before.
No.
I don't think I thought that. I thought it would be more of a widen the sidewalk. And if you're going to widen it, widen it towards the road.
Right.
And it's not into their yard, you know what I mean?
And, and you're, you're, with the sidewalk the way it is, I would, I'm guessing, but I would say you're probably not going to widen the sidewalk. You're just going to get that, get rid of it and, and build a new one.
Well, right, right, yes, but the footprint of it, the size, yeah, it's coming out.
Mm-hmm.
I think when they, and I'm not, I'm not advocating this one way or the other, I'm just adding to the mix. When Rose came out and did it earlier, several years ago.
Oh, when, yeah, Mark and I went to Redstone.
Yeah. I think they had it on the east side of the street because that, there's a wider space between this actual street and the sidewalk. All up that way. On the west side, it's more narrow.
Well, and I think probably, I think Mark would probably agree that initially, we wanted to be on that side.
Yeah, with everything.
We really wanted to be on that side with everything because of the pedestrian bridge. And it would be really nice to be on that side and then just go direct to Shop Myers. But with the relocation of utilities, that's on that side of the bridge now.
Everything would be on. Everything would be on top of the utility, so anytime you had any issues.
So that's the move to the other side of the street, yeah. But when Rose did that, we didn't know all that, when Rose did that original thing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, the student project, yeah. We, they had it. As a matter of fact, I think they had, one of the options they had was just a bike lane.
Yes, they did.
Extending the road, I mean, just widening the road and making it a bike lane with signage down through there, I believe.
Yeah, that wasn't, I remember that too, Mark. That was a discussion.
And I remember, I believe I remember then the concern because there is more parking on that side of the street tend, tends to be than on the east side than on the west side as far as the homeowners along there, parking along the street.
Yeah, most of your, most of your houses on this, on the west side have driveways and parking in their driveways. There's, yeah. Except for the house we were talking about.
Can you make the pedestrian bridge down farther, you know, east?
Hmm.
Have to move the road.
Are they gonna widen the road?
Yeah, that, okay, we could, and we would be building a bridge just for that. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be accomplishing anything with the actual.
Bridge, bridge.
The bridge.
Yeah.
Um, that was kind of our intent in keeping it there, cause we can share. Matter of fact, I'll be at the county council meeting Thursday morning, talking to them about that because we're basically, uh, I'm gonna show them how we're saving the county money by including it in this project.
Right.
Otherwise, the bridge probably wouldn't be replaced, and why it hasn't been because of cost and all. And we're able to cover enough of the cost that it actually reduces the cost for the county.
Yeah.
So.
So why is it, is it very costly to move the utilities? Is that the problem or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah.
Well, real, real, real costly.
Any, any utility work? What, what did we just talk about? A hundred and fifty thousand dollars and how much are you doing with that? I mean, as far as the number of blocks and putting that stuff in and the, I can't imagine moving the, cause you, you have water and wastewater.
And gas.
And gas going down, all down on that side.
I thought that's what it was.
Yeah. But, but that's a good question, cause I asked the same question, even if we could just do a jog down at that end or do something different or incorporate it in. But like they said, you. It, it's better not to cover it up, cause someday you're gonna have to do something.
Right.
And then you, you don't wanna be building on top of it if, if you can keep from it, so. So, so route through town, I, I think we're looking at that. Another question I have is, we're, part of our plans is to, um, build, uh, facilities, restroom facilities at the trailhead and water as well. Hopefully, I don't know, looking on the, the town's water or what, but to get some, get water there and restroom facilities. Now, the restroom facilities, we'd probably be looking at a pit type toilet versus hooking in any, uh.
I don't know if we're real keen on that.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, okay? That, uh, because that's one of the things we've had when we've had events or.
I've been to State Cars before, not pleasant.
Okay, okay. Well, is there a way, if, if we, we'd like to have the facilities there because that is a, a, a problem. I mean, as far as, uh, having facilities in town when we've had rides or any events or just people, it's like, where can you go as far as, uh, uh, public facilities? Um, now we can, um, so what kind of facilities would the town prefer on that kind of thing? And another thought I had was, and I'm not real sure of this, but I wanted to throw it on the table, is, uh, would it make sense to put one in the park? Instead of at our trailhead? Now, now the town park has the facilities and we could potentially work that in as part of our project as well if it's right there. I'm not for sure. I need to check on that, but I think we can.
Jace, you and Cliff mind cleaning toilets? Don't mind.
I think, uh, okay.
That might be a problem.
Jace, you were dusted out the apartments. Is the main on that? Which side of the road's the main on?
It's on middle. Or.
No, is it on?
It's on, uh, the south side of the road.
The south side of the road. Okay.
Oh.
Alright.
So that wouldn't help if we wanted to put it at the trailhead?
Well, that, that would help if we wanted to put it at the trailhead because that's the south side.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the, the cost to tap into the main where there's not an existing meter mark.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did some of that. I did some checking on that. We've had U-Mac do that in the past. Our water operator, I'm not so sure Gary can't tap a main now. Do you know?
I feel like he'd be able to.
I feel like he'd be able to, too. The cost for U-Mac to come and do that was pretty high. It was like fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we only charged a taffy. It was like nine hundred dollars, but I think Gary might be able to do it a little bit cheaper. So there is, there is a water main on that side of the road of the trail down there. Um, we've talked about water in the park. We've talked about different things in the park before. That's probably something that needs a little more discussion.
Right.
But if you put it at the trailhead, it's not gonna be that far off the park.
Well, that's true too.
That is true. And if it's at the trailhead, it, it's ours.
Exactly.
It, it's ours and we maintain it, but we would be probably going with the pit type toilet if we did it at the, at the trailhead. Just from a consistency, cause our other trailheads are the same way. Um, from, I mean, just maintenance and, and, uh, durability. Uh, but you know, uh, the, the strength of the, the, uh, structures as far as vandalism or anything like that, uh, it's just something that we would then, and that's part of our responsibility as far as the cleaning and, and keeping them up or whatever. So, okay, so I'm hearing, as far as moving forward, or just look to do it at our, at the trailhead, we'll find a spot at our trailhead. Um, and then as far as tapping, we do, do wanna have water just as a spigot or fountain for somebody to be able to, uh, get water. Uh, and then, yeah, we'll cover any costs as far as that'd be part of our project, so.
Um, Mark, is there a, in conjunction with this grant, is there a long-term maintenance type grant? That will allow you guys to maintain that stuff?
Not at this particular time, okay? Um, two things. Number one, it's a, it's a question that comes up a lot. We've already started the endowment fund at the community foundation. And we're up to about forty-five thousand dollars in that, and that's expected to continue to grow so that that earnings off of that every year. We don't touch it, but the earnings come off. And, uh, that is for the maintenance of the trail.
Okay.
It's our responsibility. There is, there has been talk and, and I've read some articles where they're starting as far as at the state level with some legislation. Uh, because the governor did come out and put another sixty million dollars towards this program for a couple more rounds, uh, for the NLT, for more trail projects throughout the state. And that's one of the things that came up when he, when they were working on making additional funds available. It's like, that's great, we can build them, but something's gotta be done as far as maintaining. So at the state level, there's some effort there as well. But obviously, we can't base that, base it on that, so we're covering the cost. I mean, that's not what we're doing. We've got our endowment funds set up and, and, uh, we have that responsibility to maintain the trail.
Okay.
To get it built.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'll go ahead and do, uh, move forward with the design work as far as looking facilities at the trailhead. Going through, um, now connect to the park once we come through the alleyway. Well, actually, we will, in order to, um, be able to build on the, um, right of, the town's right of way, I believe we will need an ordinance allowing that. It's a similar, matter of fact, I had talked to commissioners. I have letters that they've written and signed where we can use the right of way throughout the county to build the trail on. And they've approved that, but I think, um, I may have to have them actually do an ordinance in order to allow that.
Okay.
Now, we can.
I'll get with Scott, our attorney, on that.
And possibly, um, yeah, at least get the, uh, initial language of it. And then as we finalize the design, then make sure it's, it's covered in all appropriate, okay? I don't know that we need, we would probably need that obviously before construction.
Right.
But, um, um, we will need to look at that. And then, so we get across now, once we come through the alleyway, now we're on the street and there's a gravel alley basically, or gravel road there. Uh, if we, if, if we would like to have a paved, concrete or paved, or do we wanna maintain it just gravel and it's a, and using that as part of, as the trail going through there again? Uh, and if we actually, actually building a trail across there to connect to, say, the sidewalks along Main Street and we want it paved, would we want to come over and then cross over and actually say like get right in front of the parking area and, and be part of the park? Have the trail as part of the park, you know, within the boundaries?
I think that's smart, yeah.
That'd be good.
And I think it'd be nice to have a consistent path, not, you know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're crossing the street. We come up to the street and then it would, and actually, there's a picture of that, I believe, in there.
Yeah, literally the one we were just on.
Um. Yeah, where it shows that it does a little angle. Yeah, C three point three. And then it would go in and then you can, well, doesn't show it so much here, but it, it does end up. There, there's a, cause the parking area kind of goes into it a little bit, the park right there on the, on the north side. But we actually go in and around that, uh, and do that. And then once you get through that, you see if there's another picture here.
Yeah, the next page has the.
Should show the.
Smaller view of everything. So essentially, we would just be cutting in and then cutting back out.
And then cutting back out, but then how to, and then, so we come out, now this is basically now a gravel drive. So we would continue use that, or how wide is the ta- uh, town's right of way? Do we want to, you know, put it along with that? That's kind of a driveway there.
Yeah, this is also an empty lot as well.
Yeah, that empty lot. Actually, I heard that, uh, Jeremy?
Uh, Jeremy and Dustin and Sharon and I all own that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's a joint effort, yes.
Ah, okay, okay.
Cause we used to own that little yellow house next door.
Right, I knew you did, the, the one on the other side, yeah. Um, so yeah, getting from, now from the park, the rest of the way to Main Street. Again, uh, do we wanna build trail?
I don't consider that to be their drive. They have access to their drive from there, but that is our alley. That is the town's alley.
Yeah, and, and, and I would, I would need to know the width.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then do we, if, if, once I know the width, do we want to build a trail, a paved trail to connect to sidewalk within the boundaries of that easement? Does that make sense?
Yes, I know exactly what you're saying, so, okay. I'll, I'll figure out the width of it.
One thing I did wanna ask you, cause on your, pretty much the plans, like it always shows a jet off here, was it just to avoid?
Yeah, they, they went up and I, I'm not sure. I asked them the same thing. They just said that's how they did it and maybe they.
I didn't know if it was something to do with maybe the fire department and not being able to cross in front of it or something.
I don't think so. I mean, cause you're not, it's not like anybody's gonna be blocking.
Yeah, that's what I.
I, I wonder if possibly the sidewalk may be a little wider on this side than this side? And maybe they looked at that and said, oh, we can utilize that sidewalk on that side.
Yeah, unless the new sidewalk.
Well, I don't know so much about the sidewalk, I mean, we're here.
Uh, yeah, where you, so you would.
I don't know so much about the sidewalk as we face the parking space.
Right, it's defined, it's wider, and here we would be, using the side, it would be basically connected to the sidewalk, usually the town sidewalk to here. And then we would, yeah. Like I say, on the other side of the.
And everything else I look at, they're all, say, they're fourteen.
I've tried to keep an eye on this for a while and really haven't seen, I think one time I saw a car parked on the west side, like parallel park, you know, with the, with the road, that most everybody tends to use their driveway other than right down on the very end. Um, so.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of just cutting across and.
Staying on, stay.
Straight up.
Staying on the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me too.
Whether.
And, and I don't know what kind of work, but I mean, whatever we would need to do, say like, say the unevenness, tear it out, I mean, we'll, we're gonna make the trail.
Cutting across, cutting across here and then cutting across.
Station. I think there's sufficient room there.
There used to be a sidewalk, you just don't see no more.
Okay.
So we're going right here?
Yeah, we're, and we're gonna.
And so, and it honestly looks like probably just the sidewalk is the trail then. I mean, it's primarily walking anyways. Like I said, when people are riding their bikes, they're gonna get up there. So we have a lot of tremendous amount of traffic, so.
They're riding down the middle of the street, so.
Yeah.
And I think it'll help commerce because they have all that foot traffic walking right by the restaurant.
Well, sure. If you come up this way, if you come up by the park too, you gotta think, so you go by the gas station and you see Little Bear, you go by Comars, yeah.
Right.
I mean, on a commerce end, it is the best route.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright. And, uh, same way with the bridge, uh, the pedestrian bridge on the west side.
Yeah, yeah, we guess.
Okay.
That's what, that's what that is, so I mean, it's like, not really a.
It is on that one.
Yeah.
We could pursue the other way, but it would be so much money and, and.
It just doesn't make sense to just jump right back across the street afterward, so.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess I would, yeah, need to finalize just how you feel. And I don't need an answer denied. I mean, I don't expect an answer denied, but I'd, I'd like to get one pretty soon because we're ready to move forward with the design. Um, and, uh, how we wanna do north of Comars basically, or the old, the old firehouse, I call it, or police station there. Um, you know, whether we wanna just utilize sidewalk or give it, to me, it would be, it would like actually enlarge their yards. It gets it a little further away. I don't know if that's an issue with anyone.
Right.
Um, and there's plenty of room and it's just a nice straight shot and you go right across the bridge and then onto the trail up to the north, so.
I'll have to check it out.
Yeah, I have no issues either way.
I feel like we gotta go down and visualize. I feel like we'll have to go outside and take a field trip.
I think, I think that'd be, that'd be great, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what.
And I'd be happy to join you, if, if you like, and.
I'm, I'm thinking the, the red house is only gonna be the problem. Isn't there a cement thing in front of their yard?
No, I'm pretty sure that there's some sidewalk down there that's covered.
Yeah.
Um.
It appears that it pretty much ran all the way down through.
Yeah, and that ran all the way through there to begin with.
Yeah, there is a little cement wall.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like right up against the sidewalk, I believe, at that home.
Yeah.
The others have room.
Yeah, that's, that one's gonna be different.
Right.
And it is closer to the road, the house is too.
Yeah.
But there's lots of, there's quite a bit of space between that cement wall and actually some of that closer. Well, you don't want, you know, anarchy, so.
Right, but we'll just have to walk it. We'll have to walk it. That, we'll just have to let you know on that, Mark.
And we'll see, because we own the property behind that red building, going back through there and, I mean, depending on how that goes, right now it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to utilize any of that. Uh, and if we come out here and spend the money on this, we probably never will, so it may be something that we can provide an alternative spot.
Right.
Okay, and work something out there. I'm, I'm not committing to anything, but just something to keep in mind. We can be flexible on, on some of that stuff. Okay, trail, got the side, North Main Street, restroom. Um, soil borings, uh, I've been in contact with them. I haven't got any commitment on, to come out and do it. But we've been doing work. We've got some other bridge locations along the trail that we've been clearing and got opened up for now. Last time I spoke to him, he thought it might be around the middle of April. We're getting there and I haven't heard from him.
Right, well, we did re, um, Alliance, Dave from Alliance came out and marked with Jace. They marked where the waters were and I asked to move that boring site just a little, like about a foot.
Okay, fine, is that still marked? That's what I'm, uh, my concern was, it's gone on for a while. I, I.
I don't know.
Last time I was down there, it's probably.
I feel like the survey station right on the ground, the spot, Jace, Jace, is it still, where you and Dave went and marked down at the bridge for the boring, is it still marked? Do you know?
It might have ran off by now.
Okay.
That's what I'm, that's what I was afraid of.
I mean, to go down and mark it would only.
I was gonna say, Jace knows where it's at now. He can mark it again now that they did all that, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was hoping we, we kept that information and, and can relocate that if, if needed. Otherwise, we may have to bring whoever did it originally out and.
No, Dave, Dave and Jace, they figured out where it was.
Okay, good, good. And, and as soon as they find out, I'm sure they'll be contacting you, but I, I will as well. Uh, cause we're waiting to hear back from them. Um, and as far as schedule, um, we, uh, once we get the design done, we'll get the bid package together. And we are kinda looking to hope to move forward with, uh, basically our, if you look at the first page of the phase one, which is from County Line. We'll try to get that done this year. I guess start, it may be later in the year, uh, but, uh, I don't know how that works with, with the project she's talking about, if that, if any of that construction's gonna impact anything we're doing.
I don't expect, if, if we were to get the grant for that and if everything lines up, I don't expect that construction to go off until two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
I would say, yeah. We are gonna, I think we're gonna apply for a community crossings and it would also go two thousand twenty-three by the time we got all that together, so.
Alright, so the, um, so if there's any issue with moving forward with it this year, as far as getting the, getting through town, or at least getting it started, okay? And, uh, again, well, we will probably, maybe some of the worry, may not actually get into town until later in the year anyways. Uh, cause we're competing with a lot of projects out there.
Yeah.
And things, really high costs and schedule wise, and we wanna be in the shoulder or the off-season anyways, just to save money for our project, so, uh. I'm guessing later in the year, even into the winter potentially, as far as the construction going, but that's flexible, but that's something that.
And you're talking, starting County Line to the trail now, so I mean.
Right, we've got, we've got that to do, and we'll be working on that and the actual through town.
Stuff anyway, so.
Yeah, and we've got stuff to go even north of town, so we could be flexible with the window within town to work around what you guys' needs and wants will be. Uh, but, but we'll need to to know that, so I I guess what I would say is, if we could, I've got enough information. We'll move forward with the designs, hopefully, uh, next month, I can get some final, and I'll try to get them ahead of, to you ahead of time, like I did. Electronically, so you can look at them, and then maybe we can nail down some of these other things, and in the meantime, if you guys, yeah, I could finalize. I mean, we'll put it over here, but maybe leave that piece out, or or have it as something, and then be able to change it if, if you want to do something different, okay? Very good, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Okay, any other old business that we need to?
I just will let everybody know that the dump truck has been repaired.
Oh, good.
So, Jace picked it up last, did you pick it up last week? Last week, yep, so the dump truck's back.
Did you use it today?
It, we did have, it was additional cost, but it was, there was nothing we could do. If it was gonna be fixed, it had to be fixed, so, yeah. So I I split that out of water, wastewater, and the cemetery, so, it's done. Um, we talked about stormwater.
What about the camera and the wastewater line?
Um, do you hear from Barrett?
I've called him and left two voicemails, and I have not heard anything.
Okay. I think the ARP is kind of old business, so I'm gonna bring this up, um. Okay, so, the feds and the state of Indiana, they made a final, they made an interim final rule. And then they made a final, final rule, okay? So we can take our ARP money as lost revenue up to ten million dollars, and when you take it as lost revenue. It opens it up, and you can use it for anything that's considered government services. So, we can use it for the park, or we could use it for a road, or we could use it for just anything that's government services. And it would have been really nice if the feds had done this in the beginning, before everyone started putting their money out for different projects, but they didn't. Um, so, what'll have to happen is, so we've already received, I gave you guys all a spreadsheet. And this is what we've gotten, so our original, they're calling these tranches, which is a word that means just a deposit. We got our original tranche, which was seventy-nine thousand, six ninety-seven, seventy-one. And then a couple of weeks ago, we got a supplemental deposit of three hundred one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, that was because there were several non-entitlement units that decided they didn't want the money. So the state took that money, and then they divided it up against, for everybody based upon all those factors that they do things with. So we got the extra three hundred dollars, and then we're supposed to get our second tranche in like May or June, which would mean we've received all of our money. So far, I put down on there, well, we had committed, we committed ninety-six thousand to the stormwater project, should we receive the grant. We committed five thousand dollars to pay Christie for the environmental review, eight thousand nine hundred fifty for water meter software. And another fourteen fifty for the laptop for that, so that's what we've committed of that money. Leaving us with an available balance of forty-eight thousand, two ninety-seven, oh, eight, or so, um. So how you spend the money now is you just have to do an additional appropriation on the gateway system. Just as you would do an additional appropriation for anything else, so that's how you're doing it for government services. We do need to adopt this, um, it's a resolution, I'd say this is probably gonna be number three, I'll go check. Um, I'll just slide it down to Cody, and he can read the basic part of it. If this is what everybody wants to do, and this is, at this point in time, this is the right thing to do. There are some places that are not taking in as lost revenue, because they had already committed it to projects, they don't really need to, but this is much easier. Um, on the reporting end and whatnot, all of, so. A little bit of a backstory is, we've had to, we've had to register on this online portal, they've created this special portal for this money. So we all had to, all of us clerk treasures, had to pony up our driver's licenses, we had to do all these IDs to get to this government site. And then we had to go on and upload all of our documents and have all this, and now we have to go on by April thirtieth and make a report. Of how we plan to spend our money, how we're accepting our money, and so everyone's working on that report right now. So in the meantime, we need to pass this resolution tonight, if everyone's in agreement, because that has to go and get uploaded to them as well. So Scott Craig and I have been going back and forth on this the last couple of weeks. What, I, you don't.
All this, or are we talking like?
I think you can probably read the first page, Cody.
Okay, that's what, okay.
I'm just gonna go get the resolution number, but you can go ahead and read.
Okay, so approving American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, whereas the town council, town of Rosedale, has given consideration to identifying certain projects. Such projects as may be amended from time to time, the projects. As described in the Town of Rosedale American Rescue Plan Act Plan attached hereto, Exhibit A, the ARP plan. Uh, now therefore be resolved as follows, approval of the ARPA plan. The ARP plan attached hereto as Exhibit A is hereby approved. The ARPA plan may be amended from time to time, so long as the amendment complies with ARPA. And in any related regulations and amendment is approved by the council. So, adopted to the twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-two. Everybody. That's it, that's all the.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I mean.
I make a motion that we.
Approve the plan.
Approve the resolution for. I'll second the appropriation.
No, I was just, y'all can sign, don't get started on that again, we'll be enemies again by the end of the meeting. So, motion approved, uh. Go forward with that resolution.
Did you take a vote?
Yeah, oh. All in favor?
Hi, hi, you didn't know you're gonna get thrown to the dogs.
Yeah, I did not, I was like, I was like.
First night.
Yep.
Of course.
All you, all these women telling you what to do.
Welcome to Justin's life.
Any other old?
Yeah, we did not. Um, another piece of old business is the backhoe attachment. Jace and Cliff put a couple of new hoses on it, they got it working. It will now be listed through Big Iron Auction, which is Kyle Jurgen locally. I signed the paperwork today, it goes up for auction on May the twenty-seventh, it will be online for thirty days.
Okay.
And they have, you guys had it working and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Took videos, so, that's, that goes up for that.
See on here, the tornado siren, any?
Oh, yeah.
Jace, do we get, do we know how much the batteries are gonna cost?
About five hundred dollars.
Okay, if someone will make a motion for that, then.
Probably a little higher than that, because right now, batteries are roughly a hundred fifty a piece. You got four batteries.
Solar panel's working though, it's bringing the charge down to them.
I'm not an electrician, I wired it up, it's not pulling, it's not giving charge, so I'd say it's not working.
Should we have an electrician look at it?
I think so, before we start spending money on batteries, let's see what's working and not working first.
Okay, who do you guys want, who do you want to make call?
Was it Crown who we did the stuff here?
Crown, yes, Crown did the stuff out here, and Crown also came and figured out when I hadn't, when I had a switch flipped. And they've been very good to us, so I will call Phil tomorrow.
If they'll work on it, or look at it at least.
Have him look at it.
Yeah, maybe they can troubleshoot and.
Okay.
Help us out.
Alright, give him a call.
Might need it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's.
Another old business, I did pay the wastewater loan back. Um, waters stands at over thirty thousand dollars, I think it's gonna be okay for a while. Um, Jace went and took the mosquito class, he gets his test results.
April twenty-first, twenty second.
Have we gotten any more information on the, uh, water meter? Book, the computer?
No, I haven't ordered anything, because I needed that ordinance, and then now I'm gonna get the software in motion. So, I guess, I guess, let me, let me say this about this, so my com- my computers is dying.
Yep.
It's, the fan motor has gone out on the back of it, and it's an all-in-one unit, so it's getting hot, so. Natalie having a seizure every day trying to look at it is not working out. So I have been to Staples, and I've priced out computers, and I think that I can do a new computer for myself. And get one for Andrea at the same time, because they're both the same age, they're, I think they're at least six years old, is what we've determined. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna be around eighteen hundred dollars for two computers, based upon what I've got chosen at Staples. I will have to have someone come and help me move some of the software, because I had to call Keystone, find out the software requirements. I do have some concerns about the water meter. Software that's on there now, that we have, and so, because we still have the Connect Three system until we convert over. So there's a lot of things that play here on this computer stuff that I have to sort out, which is why I haven't bought. I've been working from my personal laptop and from Andrea's computer, which is not working, um, so. There'll be some emergency spending on a computer, but I can, that's gonna be split out of water, wastewater in general, so it's not really that big of a deal at this point in time. But that's why I haven't moved forward on that, that started acting up last week, so, I think, John, you came up here on Monday, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just continued to get worse, and then I had a tech guy out, and he said that the motor was gone, and it's not fixable, so.
So you said, the soft water software on that is part of the issue as?
Well, the, so, the way it connects is, the deputy clerk, Andrea's computer has different software than my computer has. Her computer has the software that connects to our current system, and I don't know if that software, as old as it is. If I put a new computer into play for her, if I can move that software or not. So I kind of have to make all this happen at the same time.
That's what I was getting at, so.
Getting that, yeah.
Getting the wastewater computer.
Getting a new water meter reading computer, getting the new software in, and getting new computers in the office, and it all has to happen.
That's what I thought you meant, that's why I was clarifying, perfect. So, yeah, you've got your hands full.
Well, we've been, we've been backing everything up, we've been pulling off all the data, and all the passwords and everything, so that's another thing we've been doing the last few, last week.
Did you get any prices yet?
I did, um, so I went to Staples, and really what I need hard drive wise. Is about seven hundred dollars for the hard drive unit, which will come with the keyboard and the mouse, and then I'll just need monitors. So each computer, the way it's set up was about seven to eight hundred dollars, the problem was availability. When you get online to shop, there's not showing much availability, when I went down and, that's what I did on Friday, went down and talked to him in person at Staples. Best Buy wasn't really that helpful, the guy at Staples was, he had me set up with units that were available at the Terra Hope Distribution Center. However, I couldn't buy them on Friday, because I, we have an account there, but it's not a purchasing account, it's just an account. So I, I had the town debit card, and so I have to go back and do it in person if I want to be able to be tax exempt. Because my set, because I said, can I just go back and order these from my office, and he said, you can't be tax exempt unless you're in person. So it, it's kind of a, the back and forth, but I had them all specked out, I think, I think what I have should be available.
That's good.
It's been a little stressful in here.
Sounds like it. So are we gonna use that money out of our, um, you know, the ARP money?
I don't need to use ARP money for my office stuff.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine, I got, yeah, I'll be fine, because I'll split that out of utilities, and I'll be fine on that.
So we all need to be thinking about, in our departments and stuff, what we need and what.
Whatever we think we want to do, I mean, we'll, we'll still have a pretty nice junk there, so.
Because, um, I've been looking at, um, playground equipment for the park, because of the catalog, new catalog.
Y'all better get your wish list together.
So.
Are you going over playing?
Well, my little grandson probably will be, because we're gonna get toddler-sized stuff.
Yeah.
The park does need new basketball nets.
One'd be good, yeah, okay.
We need another swing too.
I think we have plenty of money for that.
Yeah, we have, park has a budget of like forty-five hundred dollars, so there's money for that kind of stuff already, so.
Like, the catalog I was looking at was twenty thirteen, and everything is pretty much doubled in price, and so. Man, I, the new catalog I got. So, maybe we can use some of that money from the ARP fund for that.
Potentially, that's government service.
Okay. But we do have ten thousand dollars in the foundation specifically for.
The toddler.
Yes, so that's a seed money right there.
Um, yeah.
So, we'll get together on that, okay? I think we're gonna take out the teeter totters and the slide.
The old, the old metal slide that's super light.
A breaking, a broken arm waiting to happen right there.
It's definitely not regulation playground equipment these days.
Yeah.
Is that any more dangerous than the stuff they sell now?
Are you guys in new business yet?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, Carol, you probably need to make a motion for cleanup day.
Oh, okay.
On the thirtieth.
I was actually gonna suggest that for like a whole cleaning day, like park and everywhere, so.
Yeah, but we.
Smart.
This'll be your first cleanup day. Well, it, Cody. Oh, boy.
It's Jace's first cleanup day too, he's excited.
Oh, I bet he is. Bring gloves. Never know what you're gonna be grabbing hold of. He's gonna be wearing.
He said he's gonna use, he's gonna use, he's gonna use equipment.
Oh, he's gonna use the escalator, he's gonna be the mashing down person.
Right.
When is the cleanup day again?
It's April thirtieth.
We've already made dumpster, I mean, I guess, do you guys make a motion for that?
Not usually.
Not usually, okay, well, I already have dumpsters from Republic coming, two forty yards.
I've already notified Suzanne and Rooks at the Civic Center, and they usually have breakfast and lunch for us.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it'll be open, the bathroom facilities will be available there, um, that's where the dumpsters go.
Carol, are you holding off on tree removal? I think you should.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Since we're going down that west end.
Yeah, I think you might wait.
West side.
Yeah.
Might get it out of there for.
Speaking of tree removal, it's so much nicer now that there's a certain tree that's gone.
Oh, that tree has been taken down, we didn't talk about that, we did.
It is so nice, you won't have to be out in the middle of the.
Um, west and middle right here that we talked about a couple of meetings ago has been removed.
Yes, it, it is so nice that you don't have to pull out into the road to see anything.
Didn't we ask Mark about going across the road in front of?
Pass that down, Cody.
We're. I'm gonna go straight across, I think.
Okay, so cleanup day's done.
You know, I'm kind of, uh. On, on central, right here.
We won't even need to, because we're. We won't even need to, cause we're gonna go.
That's right, okay.
So, also on new business, um, there's a town leadership meeting Wednesday, April twenty seventh, six P M. Park County Annex One, uh, one ten East High Street in Rockville. Uh, looks like they're offering. Um, Indiana Office of Technology to enhance your community's online presence. Um, so, we can access our dot gov email and stuff like that, it looks like, um.
I cannot go to that, but if someone wants to go, they used to, pre-COVID, I'm pretty sure you went to one, John. Um, yeah, they're pretty interesting, it is a nice, and I think Carol and I went to something at the foundation too. I, I have to work that night, but if someone, if you guys, anybody's available to go, those are pretty good and this is the return to these. Like, since COVID, so this is the first one, Cindy sent that out a few days ago.
I'm also closing my store that night, so I will not be out till eight.
Oh, I'm the chick, I, I'm gonna have something that day, I don't know.
Um.
So, Wednesday evening?
Yeah.
That same day, there is a, Thrive West Central is having an active living workshop in Terre Haute. And, um, Mindy Duckett has asked for someone to represent the south end of Park County. For this active living day and I'm going to Terre Haute for that.
What time is that one?
This is during the day, this is from eight thirty to three thirty, so I'm not gonna be able to stay till three thirty, but I'm going and, um. I think, I think my brother-in-law Jeremy is going too, so.
That day, yeah.
So, okay, well, that's, so that's the active living thing, that's just about making your communities more. Livable, walkable, that kinda stuff, so.
Perfect tie in with the park.
I, I think so, because it's sponsored by Thrive. Yes, and it's sponsored by Thrive and everything, so I thought this was a good one to, to hit, so, yes, so. That's a good one, so I'm doing that one on the twenty seventh too, but, but that night I can't do that, so.
Any other new business?
Get CJ home from tumbling.
I'll take that one.
Everything else I have.
You gonna go to that?
Yeah, I'll go to that one, I'll be free.
Awesome.
Even if I have to work, I'll get off by four.
I'm there till eight, so.
Are you back to work, John?
I don't know until next Monday.
Oh, okay.
Then they'll make their decision.
Okay.
Do I feel like it? No.
Say you're looking a little stiff tonight?
Yeah.
So, and I wanted to talk about, uh, do another brush pickup day too.
I'm sure that that could be arranged.
Combine that during cleanup day or not?
Um, I don't know. Um, last time we did brush pickup, I'm pretty sure Justin picked it up with the skid loader, didn't he, and the grapple bucket?
I don't think so.
Yeah, but it moves a little bit different than the excavator, it can pick up a little bit, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, I can talk to him about that, I mean, he'll be at cleanup day, he's not missed one yet, so, okay.
Okay.
Do we have, Jace, do we have space to dump some brush at the cemetery? I know you just burnt some, okay.
And I would, there's some yards that we've had concerns about in the past, mowing. Going forward this summer.
Yes.
If we start to have trouble, I wanna put a lien on both those properties.
A mowing lien?
And have the guys mow them, what do you think? What do you think, you guys?
It's fine with me, it can be done. I mean, you lose it, if those are tax, if those properties go to tax sale, you'll lose your lien, but, I mean, so. I know, Kevin, are you guys planning to do some car tagging in conjunction with cleanup day? What's your plan?
Uh, I actually took that day off, so I'll be around that day, I was talking to Mike about that. We'll probably have a big stack of ordinances that day and we'll go around and talk to some folks and let them know. I like to talk to the people and give them a chance, because they can, if they got junk vehicles, they can get them scrapped and they'll even get a couple bucks out of it.
Right.
If I just go around and start slapping them stickers and taking pictures and everything, they're not getting nothing out of it, and we surely know. So, that's kinda my approach to it. Go around, talk to them, give them a week to ten days, and if they don't do it, then we'll go back and tag them. The two we are gonna tag is down there on Stevenson's property. I talked to them about them last fall, so probably we will go that day and tag those.
Okay.
Well, I like to.
Like to see if he can be around part of that day too.
When he goes, maybe we could give him some copies of our ordinances.
That's what he just said, he'll have a stack of ordinances that clarify that stuff.
That's what I've been, that's what I've been dealing with.
I thought you meant your own things you wrote out.
Yeah, no, our ordinance, yeah.
Cause I wanna start passing around some of the cemetery rules too, because we're, we need to. You know, do better with this, or I need to have people do better with the cemetery. It probably looks good right now.
It does.
It does look good right now.
Any other new business, or are we open for public comments?
Um, you have to do department reports.
Oh, department reports, okay. So. Water sewer?
Um, for water, we generated eighty-nine penalties, we hung. One tag, one tag, it was paid. You, yeah, you hung another tag last week, that was different. Um, yeah, we actually negotiated pretty well, Andrea's been calling people. I mean, when we get the sixty day people, she's just been making some phone calls, we've been doing pretty well with that, she doesn't mind.
No shut offs.
No shut offs. Um, a couple other things on water. Is if anybody would like to review the water tower condition report, they have done their report. I believe painting is on their agenda at some point, but if anybody wants to look and see what the condition is, there it is. Um. What is the, there's a, there's property on Baldred Street next to Jerry Brown's, it's their empty lot. Next to there, they're putting a driveway down there, so they've had Jace locate the meter. And they're wondering, there is a meter in the pit, Jace thinks it's an older meter. They're wanting to know if that we would consider removing that, I don't know what the council's position is on. If we remove a water meter, we have to cap that and whatnot and. I, I know that he's, like, he said there'll never be a structure there again, but, you know, will, they always own it. Will it, you know, you never, never say never.
We had a big discussion about that with the house on, um, Depot Street. I believe a few years ago.
Okay.
And I think. The consensus of opinion was to leave the meter, that was more trouble and more costly.
Okay, so, I mean, I can just call Tom and tell him that we're just gonna leave the meter and, and they're, I mean, they're probably gonna drive, they're gonna put in a drive and it's probably gonna go. Jace?
Directly over it.
Okay. But they'll, they'll try to avoid it, is kinda what he said. So, they'll try to avoid it when they're driving. I mean. I don't know, I don't have the answer to that one, that's why I'm bringing it to you guys. I don't, I don't think we should try to take it out personally, I don't, I don't think that you wanna take it out, do you?
Well, since we didn't take it out for those.
For that one?
We're opening a.
Okay, right, okay, that's fine, we're not gonna take it out, so, we'll see what happens, yeah. So, um, okay. I don't really, I'm kinda, kinda read you, so, the state of Indiana has repealed the utility receipt tax. Alright, so. They have decided that you, like, that water company pays utility receipt tax based upon how much we take in every year. I don't know, it's some calculation that comes up, I, I go online and I file a report and I say how much we took in and then it calculates how much I owe and I pay quarterly. And then I usually have a small balance due, I just, the report's due in April, I just did it a week ago. So, going forward, we will no longer have to pay utility receipt tax out of water. Now, it's all very unclear. And I sent the email from AIM, that AIM put out, which is, you know, aiding Indiana municipalities, that they put out an email with guidance on it. And I understood the guidance that we were going to need to lower our rate because of that. Scott does not agree, he says he didn't read it that way. Um, so he, this is the email I got from him and he and I kinda discussed this this afternoon. As far as the water rate, we have to review our rates. The state eliminated the utility receipt tax, which is factored into our current rates, not much, but it's there. We don't have to necessarily lower our rates, but we have to look at them and determine if they will need to be lowered, maybe that your other costs are high. And even with the utility tax eliminated, you can't really afford to lower them. We have to let our billing paying customers know, we have to let them know fairly soon, was my understanding. Scott said that he's not sure on the timeline, he said that he and a lot of other lawyers are talking back and forth about this, about the correct way to go. Because some of these, some of this language seems to say that we should have a rate study done, but. We pay two thousand dollars a year in utility receipt tax, a rate study would cost us far more than that. So, it's kind of like a back and forth and I can appreciate the state of Indiana. And, and them wanting to, everyone to think they cut taxes, but this, you know, we take in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the water money every year. And we pay two thousand dollars in utility receipt tax, if you really factor that down to each household, it's very minimal part of the rate. So, I don't know what we'll have to do, but I am just giving everybody a warning that we will have to take action on that fairly quickly.
So, we don't have to pay this at all?
They've eliminated the tax.
For how long? Is this just cause we have a surplus for a while?
I don't really know, I didn't really follow the bill all along and then I just started, there's been. An overwhelming amount of information flooded to clerk treasurers lately. Between ARP money and now utility receipt tax and changes. It's, it makes me want a different job. So, I'm not gonna lie.
No, no, don't.
I just read, just, it's directives all day long and it's exhausting. So, so that's my update on utility receipt tax.
Okay.
Till after the election and they all get reelected and because they lowered the taxes and then they can raise them again. They're not.
And I think Jace would like to tear the little white pump house down. That's a water building.
We talked about that earlier. Honestly, didn't we discuss that before? Yeah, we talked about either fixing it, putting a new roof on it or just tearing it down.
The one I asked about months ago.
It's right next to where the water tower is.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The roof on it's real.
I know, yeah.
Looks really crummy. I mean, unless there's something you wanna store in there.
There's no roof.
That's, that's the one I asked Tony about.
Oh.
That's, that's why, wanna roof or tear it down?
Yeah.
That's the one.
And it's still sitting there.
Still sitting there, yeah.
Most of your walls are now rotted out as well.
Okay.
Take that thing down.
Well, that'll be fun, you can do that with your. Can I come over and help?
Well, he, we actually discussed him doing it while we have two big forty yard dumpsters here.
Yes.
Yeah, smart, yeah.
Yes.
Um, any other street department?
I get to run the, you know, the equipment.
We're gonna take a vote on that.
Jace is kinda sensitive about the excavator.
I know it.
Um.
He said I did a pretty good job, now he's afraid I'll take his job, let me.
Um.
I'm slow, slow though.
Okay, so that was the finish with water, so he's gonna tear that down then. Now you can go street, Cody.
Any new street department, Jace?
Well.
Okay.
Potholes look better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some came back.
Um.
That south end is still fairly good.
Yeah, it's way better than it was, that's.
There's, there's really no patch, really, not much patch available. Um, I met with Brian Fleck from H W C last week or the week before. Um, on possible community, community crossings projects, um, he came down, we drove. If you look at the map, which we can look at after the meeting, um, the worst roads are small section roads. Like, my street, which is, you know, from West Street back to my house, like South Street. That affects two people, no one, no one cares about that road, um. Other small, like Sinclair over by the abandoned house, that's one of the worst. Park Street is pretty bad and it's another small strip, so we have some of those small strips. But I had a discussion with Carol, I had a discussion with John McMullin about Main Street. Um, Main Street is a concrete road. And so, you, you can't mill it particularly, because there's not a lot there to mill, so it would be an overlay type project. The discussion that I had with Brian Fleck, um, was that if we. If we, if we do something now, if we overlay it now, we're buying time. It's not going to, a mill and a, like a, an overlay isn't going to last forever, but before it gets any worse. It's definitely going to extend the life of it, before you end up with a dig down like we had on Central Street. And a dig down on a concrete street is a lot different than what we had with that project. So, Brian came and we, we drove and his school of thought as the engineer from H W C was. That we stay away from this side of Main Street, sorry, Mark, because of the bridge work. So, after that is finished, then we would concentrate down here. But if we start in the south end at that real problem area and we get to Central Street, that would make a huge difference on that side of town. And then we factor in Park Street, because it is more heavily traveled, he and I also, we came around that corner and we talked about that as well. Um. It's not up to me, obviously, these are just the discussions that I had, I had a discussion with Carol, I had a discussion with John McMullin. Brian and I, he, he had some kinda numbers, I talked to him today, he doesn't have anything really specific and we're still trying to figure out how much of a match we have. We also discussed sidewalks on Main Street, because we've talked about sidewalks so much. Um, the sidewalk costs were really, really high, so we'll have to see what they come in at. He did, he, he was of the school thinking, he was similar to me in the thought that. Put, puts a asphalt on top of it now and you're gonna get ten plus more years out of it and that's a long time. And then, when you hit. Main Street in front of our commerce section, it's kind of a game changer, because you aren't gonna be able to overlay because of your curbs. So, it, it, there's a lot going on there, but, um. I think, I wish he could explain it, but I think it would be worthwhile. I think that Main Street benefits everyone, when you start doing these little bitty, he said community crossings has changed over the years. And it used to be when it started, you had to do your worst roads first. And now, as it's evolved and as people have done, we've done a lot of our main roads and they like projects that are on Main Street. They like projects that everyone is gonna benefit from and every single person in town has to drive Main Street. And honestly, after he and I drove it, he felt like that they rated it too high, it's not in the condition. And once you get down and dirty with it and you start looking at the cracks and stuff, you realize that it's not really in as good a condition as maybe it appears to be. So, I don't know what your thought is on those, those projects that I'm putting out there, but. And we can look at the PAMP after the meeting, if anybody wants to see what they really rated everything. I don't have a big one like this, so it's kinda hard to tell, but that's kinda what he's pricing out. So, if anybody wants something different priced out, let me know. Oh, and he also suggested we stay away from the subdivision because of the stormwater project. That we wait until that project is complete if we get that grant. What do you guys think?
That sounds like the smartest route to me, I mean, that, in my opinion, is probably the worst spot in town.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and he even taught, when I talked to him today, he said after, after he dropped me off. He said he even went back and he did some more measuring and some more looking and even the section that's really bad down by John's house. He said, he said, really, it seems really bad to us, he said, but with some, some patching and some leveling and some things that they can do. That are a little beyond our capacity, that it could turn out really nice, so.
Did he think we needed to, you know, talk about dredging that out on each side?
He agreed that that will definitely help and if you. He agreed that that will definitely help and if you build that road up a little bit and you have a good crown again, you're gonna get your drainage. And you're gonna have that once again, cause there is no crown there now.
I was looking at that today, how high it is roadside down. You're talking three, four houses all the way down that side of the road. Before it finally starts to taper off and be level again.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it wouldn't benefit to dig it all out, both sides.
I agree. And I did talk to the first homeowner. I called the one that is at the corner at Lil's Lane and Main Street. And, and told him what we were going to do and he was fine with that. John's fine with that. I'm sure everybody down through there would be fine with us taking that dirt out of there, so.
Right.
So there's my street department update.
Well, if, you know, if you just get the holes going into the subduiser, that'd be great whenever you get some. It does slow people down.
Well, it's only that.
Right as you pull in, yeah.
I can't take the hump out, we'd be there.
Yeah, sometimes they have leftovers. You might be able to put a little patch there. When they're, and that would, you know, there again, the road and. The subdivision with the stormwater, uh, you know, we're gonna be busy probably all at the same time.
So and if we apply for community crossings in July, then we wouldn't probably do a project until twenty twenty-three, so.
And then, but you're saying maybe this fall on yours, right?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to talk about that and see if something, maybe delaying a piece of that if we can work together, maybe.
Well, and I'll talk to you about that after this meeting too. I, I, I crossed that bridge when Brian was here.
Okay, good.
I've been really busy.
I know you have been.
So.
Anything else on the street?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, other than the couple of things that were mentioned for the park, I don't have anything. Um, other than I did wanna kinda do a cleanup day at the park, but I mean.
Usually the kids volunteer and go over and pick up trash in the park.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, that's perfect.
Jase mowed it today. Looks nice.
I would like to have some of the trees looked at over there.
I just need to trim them up.
Yeah.
The maple and the spruce both need trimmed up.
Right, if we put a new play area, I would like it to be over there close to the shade, but I don't, I wanna make sure those limbs are gonna fall on our little. Pumpkin heads.
I did notice the other day, Jase, the bench was like moved out weird. I, I figured when you said you mowed, I was like, I figured you did that.
They move it around and stand on it and try to jump on the basketball goal.
Yeah.
You can also peel all the seats off that, from like a table you put down there.
Hmm, yeah.
That is also drawn all over.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's probably ready to go.
Hey, you can roll it all the way down the road. Yeah, I thought, no, me and Natalie wanna go, you guys get it to the road and then we're gonna push it down.
Yes.
Okay, so fire department.
Well, they had a total of eleven runs for fire, two were brush. One was a possible gas leak and one was a mutual aid and they had seven med runs. And they had breakfast on Easter Sunday, seven to eleven. Nine dollars, all you can eat for adults.
Five for kids, ten and under, I think, twelve and under.
Are, are we gonna have eggs?
No, no eggs. They're all gone.
This, this morning on, on national news, there's an egg shortage.
There's not an egg shortage, they're cost too much. They're not feeding the chickens enough.
Cemetery.
Cemetery, okay. Tell me, shut up. Nothing has happened in the cemetery, other than we got new, um, no burial.
Oh, that's good.
No grave soul.
Right. Right.
And they did put new white rock. It looks very nice.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we had cleanup day and now Good Friday, everybody can start putting stuff back. Um, you know, a little bit back. No sharp things, all that stuff. So, um. Now, now we're, I just wanna paint our little benches out there and. I'd like to plant some shrubs maybe where those flagpoles are where we dug those others out.
We can use a new flag out there if that one.
Yes, we do need to replace some flags. I noticed one for sure.
I saw that, I can see that from my porch.
Yeah.
The standard three by five?
I've still got some in the shops.
Do you? Okay.
Do you have some?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Okay, they're all different sizes.
When do the flags go back up on Main Street? On Monday weekend.
Yes.
We, we take that flag down to retired out at the Legion if they don't take it, give it to me and I'll take it over to VFW.
Flags that need to go to Legion.
Okay.
And I think the flag right behind you needs replaced.
If they don't take them, bring them to me and I'll take them over to VFW that I go to. They'll take them, alright. Some places don't because they don't have the ceremony, so, alright.
Cody, you have done real fast. I don't know if Kevin's got something. Did you have something, Kevin?
Not for the fire department.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I, well, I knew he had something and I didn't know where.
I've got several things for the police department.
Oh, okay, well, you're next.
Alright, uh, first thing is Mike's about eighty percent done with his training. He's got two more, he's got two tests and some range time that he'll be done. Um, we created a form for us to use since we can't get CAD and stuff from Norla right now. For several reasons, I still don't know. Um. The other thing is, I've got a couple of things on equipment we need to do. We need to get Mike a taser. Um, so I've been looking at that. I talked to Chief Nealon up at, uh, Rockville. A new taser is almost fourteen hundred dollars. Um, we found a place, actually Chief Nealon found a place that does refurbished tasers. So I contacted them and spoke to them. They have the same type that I'm carrying now for, it's refurbished, comes with a one year warranty. They're eight hundred dollars. That comes with the, uh, holster and a battery and everything that we would need. They will also take the two that we've retired, our old ones in on trade. They'll give us a hundred and fifty dollars each for those. So that ramps the cost of that down to right at five hundred. And then we need to order six new cartridges from Axion is where the new cartridges come from. Those things are almost thirty-eight dollars a piece. So instead of spending fourteen hundred dollars on one taser, I can get. Mike a taser with the holster and everything and six cartridges for about eight hundred dollars. And what I'd like to do is a year and a half or so ago, the Legion donated eight hundred dollars. To the police department, which we still have that in our fund. I'd like to use that eight hundred dollars to purchase the taser and the cartridges. And I say approximately, cause I don't know what the shipping charges are. Shipping's always a unknown until they actually ship it.
What's the warranty on a, on the new one?
One year. You can pay for an extra four year warranty.
Yeah, I mean.
The one, the one that we're pricing for remanufactured.
I make a motion, we let Kevin have that eight hundred dollars.
I second that.
Or tasers and cartridges.
I actually contacted them the other day. I've got shipping labels and everything to send our old ones back. I just wanted to make sure I get it approved, so.
You think, you get everything at, with, under a thousand?
I think it'll be, I think it'll, I think it'll be right about the eight hundred.
Cause I'd like to amend it for him to be able to spend extra just up to a thousand dollars.
Okay.
That way, just in case you got shipping or anything else that comes in there that you're not aware of, you'll have the money for it.
Yeah, it should be.
Carol, would you make the motion?
Yeah, she did.
And John amended it.
Should be about seven hundred and thirty plus the shipping-ish, right in that area.
Well, that'll cover you just in case.
Motion up to a thousand, Carol, and then John, you wanna second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
The next thing is, um.
We gotta vote on your motion first.
Oh, okay. I thought you already did.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Go ahead.
Okay, the next thing is our ballistic vests. Our vests are. Out of date according to all the rules. Uh, come September. We met with a vest rep about two and a half weeks ago. Lead time on vests is twelve weeks-ish. Um, so I don't know, probably six or eight weeks ago, I put in a, for a grant. For two thousand dollars from Marathon. And their timing was perfect. I got an email from them yesterday that that's been approved. So in the next ten days or so, I should be getting a, we, the town, wherever, I don't know if it comes to you or us, but. At our appeal box, but we'll be getting a check for two thousand dollars. And I put the grant in for equipment, knowing that we're gonna have to buy vests. I kinda left it vague with them. I didn't specifically say what we were gonna buy. Um, I've got quotes. I have eight quote. For three vests is, uh, just a little over four thousand dollars, four thousand sixty-six dollars. I am gonna reach out to another person to get another quote. I don't expect it to be any cheaper, but I just wanna do my due diligence.
Okay.
But I'd like to get the purchase approved. So I don't have to wait until May, another three or four weeks to put me that far behind. Because right now, if we get them ordered, because we still have to, whoever we go with, have to get them in here to measure us. So if that takes me two more weeks, then we're twelve weeks out of that, so we're pushing into probably July or August already anyway. The quote I have is for four thousand sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. Um, I actually expect that to be just a little bit less plus shipping. Uh, there's a couple of things on here that Mike and I, Chris actually, we all looked at it. There's a couple of things he put on here that we don't need. So we're gonna adjust it a little bit, but it's probably minimal hundred bucks or so.
Okay.
But we have two thousand of it coming, so.
You really just need about twenty-two hundred.
I mean, I think our end of it would be less than twenty-five hundred dollars. And that carries, these are good for five years, so that carries, once we get these, we're good for another, another five years.
Uh, anyone wanna make a motion to allot them three thousand for the vests?
They got any fluid or something?
Public safety.
Public safety, okay.
Public safety money. That's what, that's why I would use for it.
I, I was just trying to see what they got in there, make sure they're. They were within it, public safety please, fifty-six. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty, I'm gonna say twenty-two hundred just in case, cause you're only gonna, if you're putting in the four.
Up to twenty-five, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what shipping will be.
Alright, we'll go up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
That'll be plenty.
Plus the grant money.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Anything else?
I am gonna have to go buy some, uh, we're getting ready to go to the range here in the next few weeks. I'm gonna have to go buy some shotgun shells, but. I'll, I'll just get with Natalie and that's something I just go pick up a real can. That's the easiest way to do that. Um. Mike's getting us a couple of monitors for a secondary computer set up in the office. Like I said, we created that form. We just started using that this month, so as long as we, as long as we remember to use it, Tim and I, we did it one night. Um, we actually made an arrest and it looks, it looks like we tweaked it a little bit, but hopefully, hopefully next month I can collect that from that sheet. Give a little bit of a report along with it.
Okay.
That all you've got?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay.
Dogs.
I don't have one.
I know. I wish some other, other people didn't either. Um, I've been hearing a lot of complaints about dogs, big dogs, dogs biting.
Biting?
They are aggressive, yeah. One come after me in my own yard, the black dog. Yeah, I don't know. It just showed up in my driveway.
Division said he got bit and now he's packing gun, so, um.
Well, if somebody's getting bit by a dog, they should be reported on.
I know, I saw, I was wondering, has anybody reported to you about being bit by a dog?
No, if somebody gets bit by a dog and they go to the hospital, it has to be reported.
Yeah.
So apparently he didn't go to hospital.
No, I've not heard of any dog bites. I mean, I just, every once in a while, I see the Facebook police posting all their stuff about.
Yeah.
Everything that goes on that the real police never hear about.
I mean, is, do we have any ordinances on, um?
Well, the state has a leash law.
State statute, that's, I don't, I don't write, if we write somebody a ticket on a dog, I don't write them on our ordinance. Cause one, it's too hard to enforce. And two, if I wanna take them to court, we have to get Scott, they have to go to court. And to get, if I write them on the state statute, it's a hundred eighty-five dollar ticket. If they don't pay it, they get your driver's license suspended.
Right.
So it's just a lot easier for us to write a dog ticket on the state statute.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. From what I've seen, Facebook kinda does help, cause people will take pictures of dogs and say, hey, come get your dog.
Yeah.
But every time I, every time I talk to somebody, it's, well, my kid let my dog out. Or he broke his leash. They have all these.
Excuses.
Excuses.
I had a good excuse too. My grandson's letting my dog out, but. Um, I mean, these are big, big dogs that, you know, I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt, so.
You can't enforce a law over a big dog or a small dog. It's, it's gonna be stained across the board, so, doesn't matter if it's a big dog or a small dog.
Small dog far enough away that I can run.
I think, Kevin, I think that you went and visited somebody about some dogs not too long ago.
I, Gretchen Easton's been talked to about her mastiffs and there's been a few other people I've talked to about their dogs.
Yeah, I sent you down to talk to, I think that probably needs to be revisited.
What about the ones living in the van? I hear they're living in the.
Van's gone.
Right, but the dogs are not.
They're in the SUV now. Where's this at?
No, they changed their residence. They got a new house.
There's something else, don't, yeah, so.
I met that fella.
He's been there as well.
And his dog came out, ran around me.
Yeah, he has a little one.
Cause there are a lot of.
He's got three total. I did not see the black.
Well, they're, they're not on, he goes on the trail and they're not on the leash.
And the day I went and talked to him, he showed me his leashes that he puts them on.
Yeah, and then he lets him run and they're going into, uh. The private property, you know, off the trail.
And I explained to him that, so when I talked to him the very first time, I've got a. I mean, I even told him I had reports of his dogs running loose and he goes, well, I put them on my leashes. He reached around in the back of his van and said, here's my leashes. I can't write them a ticket, or we can't unless we see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this, you know, I can't just, hey, his dogs were loose and said.
So you need some pictures?
Billy Joe said, dogs were loose, so I wrote him a ticket, cause when it goes to the court, judge is gonna ask me, did you see these dogs loose?
You can't take photo, photo proof?
No. We have to be able to see it, cause that's, uh, is that like seen this to me?
Well, you, you know, you can't exactly patrol the trail unless.
Well.
No.
So, simple fact. Have a problem with dogs being loose, they have to report it so that they can catch them in that.
And that, and it's, it's not here. I mean, Monozuma has the same problem.
Everybody's got a dog problem.
Oh, yeah.
Dogs are doing, dogs are doing what's natural to dogs, it's poor ownership.
Yeah.
That's the whole problem.
Yeah.
I mean, there are accidents that happen, but the same dog keeps having a lot of accidents.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Over and over and over.
Alright. So basically, we should have people just start reporting any interaction with dogs and.
But they need to call Park County.
They can call the non, yeah, don't call nine-one-one and say, hey, there's a dog running loose. There's non-emergency numbers.
Yeah.
Five, six, nine, fifty-one, fifty-one and five, six, nine, five, four, one, three, that they can call and say.
On tape now, where everybody here.
Yeah, that's the numbers.
Okay.
It's a hard thing to control.
Can people shoot dogs? If they, uh, I mean, really.
It, that is a slippery slope.
If they are, feel threatened.
If you're on your own property. Mr. Legal Update. Ten hours of legal updates, but correct me if I'm wrong. If you're on your own property and you or your pets or your family, children, whatever feel threatened.
Right.
You have the right to protect yourself and if that means shooting a dog, then you can do that.
But just the presence of the dog on your property doesn't give you the right.
Correct.
Threat, not the threat.
If it's standing there barking at you, that's.
If you can go inside and call. You know.
Right.
Instead of shooting somebody's animal.
Standing out on the edge of the road barking at you, you can't just go out there.
Then when they get in trouble for shooting again in town?
That's where it gets to be a real slippery slope.
Yeah, not only that, but.
And hits a child, you know, that's when it kinda gets into a bigger deal than what it needed to be.
Right.
You know, because you're responsible for every bullet that comes out again. You know, regardless, if you're trying to hit the dog, you may have shot the dog and killed the dog, but that bullet still continues.
Yeah.
You know, then you're liable for anything that that bullet goes out. That's where the.
So let's not advise shooting dogs.
No.
Period.
Just call the non-emergency number for dogs.
Please call.
And if we know where they came from and if we know their continued problem, we can send these guys to go talk to them and say, hey, listen. We've had numerous complaints about your dogs, you know, hey.
If it's chasing children or chases you back in your house and it's clearly aggressive. Or aggressive towards your pets, that would be a nine one one call and they'll send, they'll send somebody.
Animal control somebody out, yeah.
Shooting a dog would be my extremely, my last resort, I would not recommend that.
I feel like that would be all kinds of legal mess that you don't wanna mess with.
I love dogs.
Okay. Properties.
Oh, but we'll deal with that on cleanup day.
Okay.
And then I I don't have a report, I've done enough.
Okay.
I've been reporting, I'm good.
Okay, public comments.
Jerry, Jerry, would you like to make any comment? Well, your public.
Hey, the only thing, I mean. The only, the only thing that I got is. Uh you know, is is, you know, letting have chickens.
No chickens.
No chickens, that excites the dogs, Jerry.
No, but um.
The dog did eat your chicken, yeah.
Uh no, it was.
Exactly what it would happen.
I was trying to get some goat milk.
Okay.
Oh.
Um.
There's a loose goat up at Rockville?
Yeah.
There's a white goat up at Rockville that's loose, it's been out by between the sale bar and Billy Creek Village for over a week. Probably can grab it, but don't bring it in.
But you'll bring it back to him now.
The speed bump down here on the end of Main Street, that's. That's the only thing that I've, that I've had concern.
What is it? Speed bump?
I call it the speed bump, it's where the pavement's kinda barked a little bit, goes all the way across the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when I'm in my mule, I slow down a little.
Well, I do too, but I mean, on a motorcycle, it tends to, you know, hurt your back. Especially in the buggy when you're hitting about four.
Well, maybe when we pave down the other end.
Make a right on Main Street, go to uh East Street.
Problem solvers, there you go.
Alright, anything?
I mean, chickens are all allowed to have.
Zero, no chickens.
Bucket full.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to pay the bills?
Pay the bills.
Okay.
That's presented.
John, okay, that. Motion adjourned?
Nope, got a vote on it.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills, I'd say say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
The motion is second to adjourn, I'll say say aye, aye. Close to any question.
There you go, we're out.